It'll be great to let us know if it'll be worth our time to do it for just Litchfield, Grayson County. So I'll keep you guys posted. And for East Main Market at our we did make a motion to contract with Danielle Urrardi, so she will have two concerts a month, June through August. I have heard that there was some question about the gospel and Christian concerts. We do plan as tourism commission to go one and have those, hopefully at least two. Right now, we're shooting for May and August on a Friday night. So I will keep you guys posted on that, and we'll all need to help, you know, get the word out. They were very successful last year. That is really all I have for right now, other than we give local grants away, about thirty-five thousand each year for local events that happen in the city. That will start March first, so the applications are available, if you know of any events that would like to apply for that.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything for Elson?
It looks like we have sound.
Okay. While we're on that subject, I'd like to thank Elsa and the others that work the boat show and going to Indianapolis. I think we'd probably all be amazed at how many people they run across in a few days up there like that. So tourism, lake tourism, boating, stuff like that's kind of some of our bread and butter. So I appreciate you guys doing that. Anyone else?
I guess I could go because I have Jody here just to go back. Does that be all right?
Sure.
Okay, first off, our boards, I just thought I'd give you the who our board members are for the baseball board and softball. We have Wes Dixon, Bryce Meredith, Jody Nutt, April Spalding, J.D. Tucker, and the director is Gary Skaggs. For softball board is Tasha Alexander, John Cockerell, Alan Dotson, Olivia Duval, Craig Hodge, and Chris Roof, and we're still accepting applications for a director for softball. Now, the reason I've asked Jody this day is we've had some discussion about, I did talk to the mayor and I did talk to the Parks and Rec Committee about hosting games on Friday night at our park. Now, they will happen at Clarkson and Caneyville. We just wouldn't do it at our park on the nights that we have tournaments next day. The reason is this, is a lot of overtime for Jody, and I think that we've discussed about, you know, him taking time off and that, but if y'all knew all that he really does in the parks, that he needs, he opens DeWitt, he opens firefighter, you know, cleans the bathrooms, empties the trash, cleans up the trash around the park, and he does that seven days a week. That's just not five days a week. So to take, not to take so much money out of my budget, I'd really like to, it usually takes them, what, three to four hours on a Friday night to prep the fields for tournaments? Now, we have one month or one week out of each month that is open to our league for the weekends that they can utilize the ballparks on that weekend. So we can do a game on that Friday night. So it's not like there won't be any just when we don't, when we have tournaments. So this is my recommendation not to host the games on Friday night. One, cut down a little bit out of my budget for overtime, and two, to be fair to Jody, I think it's a lot of work on Jody to ask him to do that. And I know the question was a contracting it out. Our fields look fantastic, and I really don't want to trust anybody else working on our fields. They could mess it up very easily. We can't allow them to use our equipment because of insurance purposes. They have to be employed by us. I can't let any younger kids go out there because then still Jody has to be there to supervise them, and that's who he usually hires for the summer. So I wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with that recommendation.
How many hours a week are you getting? How many hours a week do you work?
Uh, forty hours.
Well, forty hours, and then he does the tournaments. So he works every Saturday and Sunday when we have tournaments.
So are you there the whole time?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what's your board? Is your board only?
Well, some of them, most of them were for it. I was just asked to bring it before City Council. One person asked that I bring it before City Council. The other one said now they understand, as long as they could do the one Friday at night, they were okay with it. But they just, they didn't realize what all that Jody really does. He just doesn't drag fields and prep fields for ballgames. He has a lot more responsibilities. He also, you know, last, all summer long, he mowed DeWitt and firefighters. So, you know, that's a tedious job.
So when y'all rent tournaments out, do the people responsible for the tournaments, they don't clean the concession stand and the bathrooms before they leave? How come?
Because we, we do the concession stands.
So we do them at the tournaments?
Yes.
At all tournaments?
Yeah, we do run the concession stand, and we empty trash, and
I understand.
We try to keep it all cleaned up.
Do we supply umpires, or they bring them?
They bring them. That's all, that's all they're using.
So we rent, we rent the fields, and then, so basically, all they take care of is the fields themselves. We take care and utilize the concession stands, and then we bring in the profits off the field rental and then the concession stand.
Do they bring their own field equipment?
No, we use ours.
So you do the fielding?
Yes, I do. So I'll do the, say, Friday night, say, if we was to have a game on Friday night, league game, after, say, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, when everybody goes home after the leagues, then I would have to come in and get fields ready. We have seven fields. Say, if we're renting seven fields Saturday, then utilize seven fields Friday night, I would be there at nine o'clock that night to get all seven fields ready, drag chalk, and get them ready for Saturday morning. Saturday night, when the tournament is over, I've got to do the same thing, which I do now for Sunday morning for, for the tournament.
So the girls play on Friday night?
No, last year, the softball board had decided not to play on Saturday nights, and in 2021, we did not play on Fri-, I mean, Saturday, apologize, Friday nights. In 2021, baseball did not play on Friday nights. Softball board was good with that because, once again, they can do games at Clarkson and Caneyville.
So the other night of the week that they're playing, is that guaranteed in Litchfield?
I can't guarantee. It's all depends on how the, we will have games on, at Litchfield on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. I just can't guarantee who's going to be playing at Litchfield.
I just hate it for the kids not to be able to play. I mean,
Well, they are playing. They're playing at Clarkson and Caneyville.
Most parents, I'm saying, probably work Monday through Friday. Friday's a good night for family night, go to the ballpark.
But there's no guarantee that everybody from Litchfield will play at Litchfield on Friday night. Some of them will be at Caneyville, some of them will be at Clarkson.
On Saturdays, do you redo the fields through the day? Or do you just get them ready Friday night, and you're done until Monday?
So I get them ready, I get them ready for Saturday,
Right.
Then they play Saturday, and then I get them ready Saturday night for Sunday. Now, if there was a situation where, say, there needs to be some field makeup and, and address, the field needs to be addressed throughout the day Saturday, yes, I will then, during the midst of the tournament, take care of it, you know, rake the field, drag the field or something during the midst of the tournament, if need be. But a lot of times, it's Friday night prep for Saturday, Saturday prep for Sunday.
So you're called in on overtime on Saturday, you know?
Yes.
And he also oversees some of the concessions. So when they run out of supplies, or he needs to get them changed, he's able to go there because I don't feel the responsibility of making a teenager run out and get a bunch of quarters or dollar bills, or go to Walmart and pick up product.
I don't think, if I understood you guys right, it's not going to shortchange the kids as far as games playing.
Just on Fridays, just on Friday nights.
A bit of games played? No, not a bit, not one, one hundred percent, no.
But they will get the one Friday every, uh, those three months, they will have one Friday that they will play.
So they have one Friday or all weekend?
Well, they get the whole weekend, but there's no tournament that weekend.
So the Friday, the Friday they can practice, they can have Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Mm-hmm. The Friday night that they can host a game there, they have the whole weekend to either make up games or practice.
So you do have a couple make up Saturdays or something, if you have to have them, for them to?
Was it March, March, April, May, and June?
How often is it booked for the tournaments? I mean, is this every, you got three, three weekends? I mean, so every, you're booked every weekend for a tournament?
I think there's somewhat, somewhat, don't hold me to it, around twenty, twenty to twenty-four tournaments scheduled from March to November, I believe. Don't, don't hold me, don't hold me to that.
Did we raise the rental?
Uh, we were gonna, we didn't get it, that, I apologize, we didn't get that before the City Council. We talked about it, raising it for, if they had to use the lights at night, that it would be additional twenty-five dollars per field.
Because we don't, to my understanding, we don't make a penny off the weekend. True.
I'm not, I mean, Parks and Rec doesn't make money anyway, but
No, I understand that.
Um, I'm not going to say that we don't make any money. For one, we bring in a lot, lot for tourism also. But we, I mean, I'm gonna say we do make money, but we don't make a killing.
Do the, the, how, how does the gate work on, on like during tournament time?
They get the gate.
They get the gate?
Yeah.
So that won't affect us being affiliated with Little League and the fact that they can't charge, will affect them at all?
No.
Do you anticipate any, like, maybe Little League teams, like tournaments, that, like, affiliation with the Little League, like we will be?
That, I mean, that's open for possibility. I think actually, the first tournament we had here at Litchfield was an All-Star tournament, dates back to three, probably four years ago. Very successful. And when you get All-Star tournaments during All-Star time, yes, that would be an open, yeah, that'd be open for possibility, for proceeding. So, yes. I think going Little League will kind of drive, put a driving force for that kind of stuff to take place as well.
Right.
Well, if you charge more, you, I mean, if you can do that, you may be able to hire somebody to help also offset your costs for overtime.
Well, the, the issue is, is having, you can hire somebody, it's having Jody there because if you hire young kids, you can't let them come without being supervised. And that's my big thing.
What, sixteen? I mean,
I think it's fifteen, sixteen.
The pool's not much, so, well, what you?
So, they're supervised.
You're young.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll throw this in Tyler's lap, just to give you an example real quick. He's been around the Travel Ball Arena quite a bit. You know, there's times that, if you go and look at through the survey right now, say, in the third region, that I think for third region, high school, umpires, and referees, I think there's about twenty to twenty-one to cover all that. Why is that? Because parents, they're so competitive, and there's times that things get a little out of control, and I have to be the bad guy, the police guy, okay? So if you put a sixteen-year-old that is responsible for putting out a fire, it couldn't do it. That's part of my job to police and make sure everything stays under control there. So that is part of my job on the weekends, to police and make sure crowd control, crowd control's a big thing, huge thing.
And the event person should be taken care of. Whoever's got them fields rented should be the guy that's taking care of the problems
Should be.
With the parents and the league. It's their teams. I mean, it's, but it's, I take ownership. It's my part. Sure.
Okay, I've got, I've got a question. Jody, what, I'm kind of new to this, but what exactly is your title? I mean, what, what's your job?
I don't know. You want to tell me?
He's basically maintenance supervisor over the ballparks, and at this time, firefighters and DeWitt.
Okay. So we have program directors for baseball, and I'm going to throw this back thirty years. What do our program directors do? Are they, why are they not?
Rec League. They only run the rec league.
All right. But wouldn't rec league be Friday night? If they had a game, would that not?
Yeah. But then, yeah, that would be on Friday night. It's, it's all during the rec league season.
So do the program directors, do they not do any of the field maintenance?
No. They used to do that a long time ago, before Parks and Rec came into place, but now that we, we take care, we've lifted a lot of load off them.
And what do the program directors do?
They, well, you've done it, so you go through the whole story.
So, like a program director, he oversees the league, say, Little League, and then he takes care of the scheduling, getting in touch with the coaches and, and, and teams and stuff like that, organizing the league. They absolutely, that's all they do is, is run the league.
Yeah, they hire the referees and umpires.
So they couldn't do any of the policing that?
They, they, I think he's talking about on weekends.
I'm talking about weekends.
You're just talking about weekends, okay.
Yeah, he's not there during the, you know, he might show up periodically, but he's not there during the week.
During our leagues, like Little League, minor league, I don't even know what to call them anymore, but it's when Gary would be there and whoever's over softball or something like that. So he, they would only, the directors would only be there if Litchfield people were, Grayson County people were playing.
And they make sure the park is cleaned up afterwards, all the employees pick up the trash, empty the trash and all that stuff during the week, or at, in the evening. You can't say during the week, sorry.
Okay.
Tammy, with the league, would liability cover the, the directors if they worked on the fields, ran the equipment? Would that be an issue?
No, I don't think that's an issue with them.
Now, Denny, I tell you, before we had Jody, and I was in a lot with the girls, like Lori and Jeremy, we, we had a director department, and we would hire people to mow, and they would usually umpire, keep a book, or, or just, and it was young kids. You know, I, I think we had one guy, he was a little older than the rest of them, that we had one year that took care of it a couple times, that, but he was there every night. So that, that's how we, that's how the girls' park did it before Jody came along, is the director, they would hire some guy to come in there and mow some kids, come in there and mow, or two of them, and we had mowers for them, we had everything for them, and they'd just come down there and get the fields ready at night.
But now we have a, an ABI. It's more extensive equipment, and, I mean, Jody's tried to get me to get, learn how to ride it, but, um, let, have, asking them to do that, I think, is a big responsibility.
Well, if they're not covered by
Yeah.
Insurance, you don't want any, even close to it.
There's an age limit on who can mow. Do you remember what that was?
They have to have a driver's license, sixteen. So they have to have a driver's license to ride a lawnmower.
What happened to Jody? Sick and can't, can't get there.
Tammy's going.
I have, I have to do it, but I've never.
Well, he is David's, I mean, he's got involved.
He's got David Clemmons who can do it, too.
That helps him do the server.
Yeah. But, but I would have to be there if they're feeling for Jody. So, I'm just
There is, there is some liability with, with getting kids over there.
It is.
They would still need to be supervised by someone, so.
They do. As you've noticed at the pool. But, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that that was my recommendation, and I hope that I have you guys' approval for that, just to see how it goes this year. I, I mean, and it has not affected our numbers because we did it in 2021, and our numbers still climbed in 2022 for baseball. So it's not affected our numbers in any way, and they still get to play. Actually, I know Clarkson was really thrilled to have Friday nights.
Yeah.
And Caneyville, too, because they don't have a lot coming into their parks, and that, that gave them an opportunity. So.
But it is open one, one weekend a month?
Correct.
For everybody.
We can book it on one weekend a month, and it's a third, it's a third, third weekend of every month, from March through June, is given to our program so that they can have the games on that night.
I also know that Jody has to police the walking trail during the games to keep people from camping on the walking trails.
That I do.
Actually, which is, it happens a lot more than you think. It is an issue.
We'll have signs up this year, hopefully, that will deter more cars driving on them.
So have you talked to the girls' board about knowing the gate?
Yes. We had a meeting. It was just a quick meeting. It was with, it was when Kevin announced that he was stepping down, and we had enough to talk about it, and they said that they were perfectly fine with it.
Can you give us some numbers on that from last year, what they brought, just at the gate?
Uh-huh. I sure can.
I know it's not some substantial amount, but
Right.
But again.
I've, I've got a lot of feedback from a couple, from parents, and I can't say, probably about five or six, so just to give you, some lady overheard me talking about it, and she said she's thrilled that we're not charging gate. She said because, she said, I can actually bring in Mamaw and Papa, and aunts and uncles can come watch the games, and she could take all of her kids instead of leaving half of them at home, so.
Was it a dollar?
It was two dollars, but you figure it out. If you get ten weeks and your kid's playing, you know, that's, could be sixty, up to a hundred dollars a season that you're paying for gate. So.
Doesn't it keep him from upping the concessions prices about ten percent, is it?
Yeah. Well, we're going to have to raise them up a little bit because we met with our provider, and he was telling us that prices have gone up some, so we're, we're going to have to raise up a little bit anyway. Not, not a lot of our items, a lot of our items were substantial, like our hot dog and hamburger, but the other items have really gone up. Actually, a hamburger's going to have to be raised a little bit. So. Are we good?
What do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's between you and your board, and then your director.
I agree.
Like, that's an issue. I mean, that's, and then if you have an issue with all of them or something, then you come to us or to them.
I was just asked by one person if I could take it before the City Council, and that's what I'm, what I'm doing. So, okay?
I appreciate you know what's going on.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess we're down to the first reading of amended ordinance for code enforcement board pay. Last amendment did not include the hundred dollars for the chairman and incorporate term dates. Earlene?
And actually, I wouldn't believe that term date, but it's a, probably, I don't believe that term date set when they were appointed. So if you wanted to think about that, and at the next meeting, our, our next meeting is in early March, be the same in February of March. And so we'll have a couple meetings before then, so if you want to think about, think of what, think about who to appoint, that council, that, that, so.
We just need to get them staggered so everybody doesn't come up for appointment at one time.
And they are staggered in the ordinance. It's just when they were appointed, there weren't terms stated when it was appointed. So, all right. Summary of the ordinance admitting in the warrants related compensation to coast force that were, where a city at Litchfield exercised, under its public policy purposes, where a city has no warrants that reasonable compensation of those who are appointed to serve on the wards of the city of Litchfield, and now that the board will name by state, which was updated, and in the order, two twenty-three, the open court has been on seventeen, twenty-two, two minutes, follows with added portion from the other line, and the legal force will be mandated by a line drawn through them, and it has a bracket for closing them. Members that have coast force report shall be on, reimbursed for actual expenses shall be approved for compensated in an amount of fifty dollars a month. The chairman of the ward shall compensate an additional fifty dollars a month for those services chair of the board. And this is the first reading, so we will vote on these.
Okay. Thank you, Earlene. Anybody have any questions right now for Earlene about that? Moving on, first reading of amended planning and zoning ordinance.
I got a question on the amended part. On number F down here, at the very bottom, the officers of planning commissions are consists of chairman, vice chairman, and secretary treasurer. I think that should add, that it should be city residents to be those officers. I don't think it should be someone for the county.
What do you guys think? Just have some discussion from everybody.
I agree.
Do you see what I'm saying, Denny?
I understand. I understand. And that's, that was in the KRS, was that way, but it related to the, against citizen member being non-elected. But I usually agree with Tudy almost everything, but I, I, I think we need to get the best person in there. And as long as they've got a business in the city or own property, they, I think they've got skin in the game, and I think they'll do what's, should be doing what's best for their business in the city. So that's just my take. I think the best person should be, and left up to the board themselves to determine who they think would be the best person, the way it is now.
The, the board will actually vote on who their chairman,
Right.
Vice chairman and all of those.
But the way it's going this way, with two-thirds of them can be out in the county, after four or five years down the road, you could have almost all these officers being out of county people.
No, they'll, actually, under D, two D, it states that the business owners have to reside of Grayson County also. So you wouldn't have someone that would be outside of the county.
They're just outside the city.
They're just outside the city. But that would be, that would be Grayson County.
That's what I'm saying. They're county, they're not in the city.
Yes. I mean, at, at least, they would just have to meet one of those, it says two-thirds of the planning commission shall reside within the corporate limits. So at least two-thirds are going to be in the city, and then those other members would have to meet one of those following qualifications.
So there would only be on the, there would only be on the board, only two non-Litchfield residents?
Two non-Litchfield residents.
So.
But they could eventually be officers and be out in, and live out of the city. To me, that, that's not right. I think if, if we're going to keep our city going, we need people from the city doing it. I mean, that's my opinion.
And I, I understand that. I somewhat agree with that, but in, on the other hand, I, I do agree with Denny that we want the best people in position. And the fact, to me, now, this is just my opinion, like, like you said with yours, but I would, I would not want to be on a board if, if I was going to be handcuffed at the point, you know, that would, that would, that would mean those people could never hold an office on the board if we, if we ran about like that.
That's true. They could be on the, they could be on the commission, but they couldn't be on the board.
Yeah, couldn't be a, an officer.
Officer, right.
Of course, interesting thing is on the board, Tyler could probably correct me on this if I'm not wrong, but the chairman of the board doesn't even vote.
Right.
They, they're just, so the chairman runs the meetings, but they don't vote on anything, unless there's a tie. I think maybe that's the only time the chairman would ever vote. And there couldn't be a tie unless there was somebody off, right in their seven. So they would never vote, the chairman wouldn't.
Yeah. This board, too, is, it's a little more complicated, I think, than, would you agree, Tyler, as far as, and it's, from, from what I've been able to gather, it's, a lot of it has to do simply with the experience that, you know, that people.
Well, I think you're trying to go with the experience, people that's been there is what you're betting on or what you're banking on to come back and be the people that you all want them to be, or we want them to be, as far as commissioners, assistant or secretary or something like that. I, I, I do agree with you, being the commissioner needs to be a city resident. The other two boards, that's not, nothing to me, I don't think, as far as that part of it, but I, I think a constituent that wants to be the commissioner of the planning and zoning should be a city resident. I mean, that's, that's just my opinion. Like I said, it's a little less want-to-be, but, but I, I just, and, and I understand you're going, but, but the people, the people that you're going to go for is there to instrumental the people, to teach them anyway about where to get, because someday, we won't have the people that's been there forever, and we're going to have to teach someone new, just like Tyler's grown into his job, the ins and outs of things aren't in the commission. And that's my only deal with it. I don't think it's a huge problem for us. I think it's just a...
And I think, I think, too, the point you made, I think, is a good one if you, if you carried a little further, that, you know, anytime we've been involved, that we have an issue with this board, it can turn into quite an issue. You know, I feel like that somebody with experience as a spokesman for that board may have a little easier time dealing with that than maybe somebody that, that's brand new on it. And, you know, that's, that, my whole goal is to get them some experience that can, that can bring them along over time.
Well, that's, that's why we put the two on that we did.
Yes.
I mean, in the last month or one. It was the reason, and
I think, I think them being
They had to learn to.
Yeah. And, and I, you know, I'm, I think that, I think that they can teach those people and, in my opinion, and deal with some of the issues that they're going to deal with better from a leadership role, maybe, than from a teaching role, right now. You know, right now is kind of, we're running the gun, getting people with the experience to, to stay on it. So that was, that was my thinking with the whole thing. We discussed it a little bit, Billy, you know.
And I think two to three officers will probably be city residents, or whatever you will call them. I don't know if they're officers, but, I mean, I just don't know.
And I noticed F, what, Earlene, that mentions chairman, vice chairman, and secretary treasurer. Who does, who does the notes, like, the, keeping the notes and everything on the meetings for that?
I think Heather comes and takes the notes.
We have a secretary treasurer. We really don't need a treasurer. We don't, we don't do anything with money, you know, all the money that comes in from our bits goes straight over here to y'all. But that position is basically the only thing they do is work off.
So does your secretary, secretary have to be on the commission? Because Heather's not on the commission, so.
She just keeps the notes.
I understand. What's the difference between her keeping the notes and the secretary?
The ordinance reads that it should be the secretary for
A D's note.
Appointed by the board. So that's...
So theoretically, we could just have assistant in the commission. If Heather's gonna keep notes, I'm complaining Heather to be there, I'm sure of it.
Yeah, she runs the.
Yes.
Machine, so.
Which the secretary treasurer doesn't make any delay in forwarding the mission then regularly.
No, Heather just gets called out to come in and do the meeting, right, Lord, I mean, she'll, just like you.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my point all along, that several years down the road, you could have the, the chairman, the vice chairman. Be a county residence taking care of the city. Planning and zoning. They couldn't be.
County residents that own property in the city.
And it's whatever y'all wanna do.
Property or business.
Or business.
Or business, yeah.
It's whatever you wanna do, I can make some minor changes and read it at this first reading, it's just once I read it tonight. I can't, I can't make significant changes going to a second reading.
So, so Earlene, on the legal part, what about the secretary versus Heather coming in and taking notes? I mean, looks like that's the same job, but is it not?
If, if there's no, I mean, I don't go to the, the meetings, I haven't overlooked the ordinance in preparation for tonight, but. If the only task as the secretary of treasurer is just a roll call, I mean, I would just delete and do a chairman and vice chair.
The only thing you're gonna run into, I think, Billy, is that the bylaws require, the bylaws require the three officers. So you'd have to amend the bylaws to do away with the secretary and treasurer.
And see, I'm not familiar with their bylaws, I don't have them.
KRS may also require something like that too in the planning and zoning.
Yeah, and I, I don't know.
But I do know the bylaws require the three officers, the chairman, co-chair, or the.
What if, what if we did this, what do you guys think if we, if we limited an officer to one county resident? That we, that it couldn't be as Tudy said, they couldn't be, they couldn't be vice chair and chair, both members, county members.
Like I said, my only deal is the chair, and, and, you know, and it's just cause I work for the city. And I think the city residents should have the, you know, that seat, but.
Like.
And I understand your experience too.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you get in, but, but if you have somebody like Tyler, I think that guy even guides them, which he is. And just like Steve Kinkake was so good because he'd been there so long, and he went to every conference in the world, and he dedicated his life to planning and zoning for the city of Litchfield.
Dave Vickery's also the attorney for the planning and zoning, so guidance there. But again, the, the head of the, the chairman is, they just run the, they just run the meetings. Again, they don't vote, they just run the meetings.
Unless it's a tie, unless it's.
And so, I guess you'd say that if you had a county person as commissioner, they would vote anybody.
Yeah.
I mean, unless, or never.
Exactly.
As chair.
As chair, if they were chair of the.
Book watchers attack. There are seven members and they.
They would vote if there's a tie, obviously, but the two years I was there, there was, and it could happen.
And just to add in, the KRS only requires a chairman, it says chairman and any other officers which it deems necessary, so. KRS doesn't have a restriction, but there may be something in our bylaws, I just don't have those.
I think the bylaws do. I may even have.
And I, you know, again, I think if there's any, any issues with them. Tie, tiebreaker, whatever happens, we're gonna get it here, you know, it's gonna come before the city. As a general rule, it, it usually does, so.
I guess my perspective on this is this is a city committee, and it, in my opinion, the chairman of a city committee needs to be a city resident. Someone who lives in the city limits, who votes, who pays our taxes, who does everything, regardless of whether they. Live right outside of it and they have a business here, they don't live here, they are not city of Litchfield residents. So that, that's where I'm coming from.
They do have property or business, so they've got interest in it.
They do have an interest in it.
Then I have a stupid question, I guess, why do we have county people on there at all?
I was, I was gonna say that if, you know, if we go to the point of, of limiting.
I think we struggle to fill the board anymore.
Well, I understand, but having served on many boards for the city, I've never heard that we, we do that. I don't disagree about that, but to me, as an individual, if you're gonna say I'm good enough to be on the committee, or I'm good enough to be on your board. Why are you restricting me as to what seat I can hold?
It's the, the bylaws, it's.
That's, the bylaws do require the three officers.
Yeah, it's.
But I'm just saying, as far as if it's city or if it's county, to me, if they're good enough to be placed on the board. Then I don't understand restricting them as to whether they can hold a position or not.
And that's, that's kinda, I, I agree with that wholeheartedly, because, you know, it's, it's hard to get. As Billy said, people on that board.
Yeah.
And it's hard to get the experience, cause most people that have had the experience. Usually don't want it again, you know, it's, but. You know, I'm not sure what.
Well, I think we're all in agreement, right, to have the makeup of the board being two-thirds residents, everybody okay with that? I mean, two of the, would be, could be non-residents, long as they're a business owner.
Or property.
Or, or property owner. So the only issue is, are we all in agreement, the only issue is really whether we want the officers. To be residents or limit to one, or the, just the commissioner, like Billy's suggestion was, or the chairman rather, to be a.
Tyler, do you have any thoughts on, on that? You work closer with them than, than anybody in the room probably, so.
Just in my opinion personally, and doing what we do. I don't agree with limiting somebody in the capacity of the board on what they can do if they're on it. Planning and zoning is a whole lot more than zone changes, building permits and sign permits, we, we do a lot of training. Basically, for the future of what we need the city to be, which includes incorporating county properties eventually. So if we have people that have interest in the city, even if they reside in the county. If we're looking at expansion in the future, then I don't see a, a problem with if they have an office on the board or not. That's just my opinion.
Thanks, Tyler. So, where, where are we at, guys, what do you guys, I know.
Do, do we have any planning? Our planning and zoning doesn't go outside of city limits, does it?
No.
I guess the main is, is, I mean, the commissioners vote on who their officers are.
Right.
We don't.
Right.
So, so I guess if they voted for the people that lived in the county and had a, or had property and business here. That would be what we would have to do, unless we want to involve ourselves more to make up their, how they vote.
That was kinda my thought, Billy, who better qualified to decide who should be the chairman than the people on the board?
The commission.
Cause they've gotta work together, so.
And two-thirds of them are citizens of Litchfield anyway.
So you have two, two non-residents, five residents.
So five resident city, two non-resident city. So one of your board people's gonna be in the city anyway, no matter what.
Has to be.
Probably two.
Yeah.
Right.
I would say. And, and I, I, I think it comes down to who will just to do it, is what I think it comes down to.
That's a lot of it, who's willing to.
Little versus whether you get somebody that wants to commit like Steve Kinkake committed.
I, exactly, and I can tell you from my experience, it was three, three people that said no before somebody said yes.
Right.
Well, if, the officers. If they have one officer, I'll go along with if one officer is in the county, but the other officers has to be city.
So to be able to make that decision, Earlene, what do we have to change? For their bylaw or protocol?
Well, they're gonna have to.
To do that.
They do that.
They're gonna have to vote to change their bylaws.
Yeah, they gotta do that.
Right, they're gonna have to be one voting, so our recommendation, their recommendation, they'll do that.
Right, you do.
Well, I think you could prob, you could put in the ordinance, couldn't you, Earlene itself, the officers of planning commission, assistant chairman, vice chairman, and secretary treasurer. Then you could specify that only one of which can be a, a non-Litchfield resident.
Okay, I can add that, if that's the consensus of the.
What do you think?
For that.
Earlene, what did it say before we struck through the line on F? There was a portion of F the last time that we met and we struck through it, and it has specifically to do with this.
I believe it said had to be a Litchfield city member.
So that's what it said originally, was that it had to be a Litchfield city resident?
Yes, and then it was.
And we decided to strike through that?
Yeah.
No, I, I think I, I think, Earlene, from my, what, that was my, what I wrote down.
Yes, that was.
And what it was, was based on the KRS, it wasn't based on Litchfield's ordinance, it was Kentucky.
What is our ordinance state now? Before we go into changing anything, what does our ordinance state now on us?
An F doesn't exist, there's no restriction right now.
An F doesn't exist, so how has it been all of these years up until right now, what have we done?
It mirrors the KRS, KRS states citizen member. And I think the interpretation of that in the past was a citizen member was somebody residing in the corporate limits of Litchfield.
You're right.
And we've just, we've changed the interpretation of citizen member. We've changed our interpretation of citizen member.
When you look further in the KRS. We change our understanding of interpretation, that's, I mean.
Our interpretation was wrong.
In the past, my.
That's what amounted to, our interpretation was not consistent with the Kentucky rights statute.
Yeah.
The statute required the citizen members to be.
Yes.
Either cannot be elected and employee. So that was a KRS. We incorrectly interpreted to mean Litchfield resident.
And that's incorrect.
I mean, that was.
And that was led by the mayors in the past.
Exactly.
That's the way they, they interpreted it.
And it is confusing, I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's confusing, so.
Well, you're intermingling the Kentucky statute and our ordinance and the bylaws, that's what ends up, and, you know, it's basic statute controls. Ordinance is seconds.
Yes, statute's always gonna control.
So what's the remedy?
I'll go along with what, what I just got through saying, you know, one, one officer can be out of the county, but. Out in the county, but, and be a businessman in Litchfield, but the others has to be in the city.
Okay.
So, I think.
That's left up to everybody else, but that's my recommendation.
Now that you have a clause in there, if they don't accept.
Well, the, they have to accept it, I mean, if it's in the ordinance, they have to go by the ordinance, the planning and zoning. They trump.
If I'm on there, no one be secretary, I don't have to be secretary.
Exactly, you can't force anybody to do it.
That's the problem.
That was a problem, I'm sure it will be.
Total problem.
Yeah. But I think it'd be an easy fix for Clayton's idea, just to put it in section F, is just specify only one of which can be a non-Litchfield resident.
What do you think, Tudy?
That's better than we started out.
Terry?
Still thinking.
Billy?
But we're not gonna specify what that, we're still not gonna specify what the chairman. Of that commission. We're just gonna leave it open as to one county, two city. And then however the board votes on placing those three or appointing those three.
And that, based on what I'm hearing, I mean, it's whatever you tell me to read, so, and I'll, I'll word it, so.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to vote on their own officers, I mean, we can't appoint them as officers, we just appoint them as commission members, so. You know, there may be a time when both officers, or all officers are city residents, you know, it could be, it could work out that way, or it could work out.
Then you'll need to change the wording on that and up to. Up to one county resident, if he said that at, at some point it could be all three of them city residents. Then we could have up to one county resident and two city limit residents. Is that, is that what you were?
Yeah, and I was, I was just thinking, Denny said, only one.
Only one of which can be.
Which makes it another county resident.
At least one board member has to be a city resident.
Yeah, or just, it'd be easy, just, easy fix would be just put only one, only one officer can be a non-Litchfield resident.
Yeah.
And then they get to decide, the, the board decides who they want to swap, but only one. And once they've got the one, then that's it.
Yeah.
But they don't have to pick the one from.
They don't have to, they don't want to.
All three from the city.
They can pick whoever they desire to pick.
Then that's why she needs to include the words up to one. If they, if the committee, if the commission decides that they don't want that county person, when you include the words up to. Then that means that all three of the officers could be city limit residents. Instead of forcing them to choose one county resident. Do you understand what? Is that clear, Earlene?
Yes.
Okay. Denny?
Well, I think it's just an easy fix, just to say only one of which can be a non-resident, and that's a problem solved, in my opinion.
Yeah, it doesn't require one to be a county resident, it just says no more than one.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that, or is?
Yeah.
Gina?
I have only one of which must be a non-Litchfield resident.
No, I think can be.
Can be.
Can be, not must be. Right?
Right. Right.
Yes, you're correct, okay, all right. All right. Okay, are we ready?
Thank you.
We ready for Earlene?
Only one of which can be a non-Litchfield resident, correct? All right, all right, just wanna make sure, all right. All right, summary of an amendment to an ordinance involving membership specifications for the planning commission, whereas on the July nineteenth, nineteen ninety-nine, the city of Litchfield, Kentucky enacted an ordinance providing for the creation of a planning and zoning board, which said ordinance. Provide qualifications for those members serving on the planning commission, whereas in order for the ordinance to reflect current revised, Kentucky revised statutes related to planning commissions, whereas to set additional qualifications of board members serving on the planning commission. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that ordinance ninety-nine point six passed on seven nineteen ninety-nine is hereby amended as follows. With deleted portions being indicated by a line drawn through them and in passing by brackets and closing them with added portions being underlined. There shall be seven members approved by the city council and appointed by the mayor for four years, terms shall be staggered so that the terms of no more than two members expire in a year. C vacancies on the planning commission shall be filled with, within sixty days. Two, if the vacancy is not filled within that time, the commission shall fill the vacancy according to its bylaws. D, planning commission members must meet a minimum of one of the following, reside within the corporate limits of the city. Two, own and or operate a business for profit within the corporate limits of the city, and shall reside within Grayson County, Kentucky. Three, own real estate within the corporate limits of the city and shall reside within Grayson County, Kentucky. E, at least two-thirds of the members of the planning commission shall reside within the corporate limits of the city. F, officers of the planning mission shall consist of a chairman, vice chairman, and secretary treasurer. The only one of which can be a non-Litchfield resident. And this is a first reading, so we will vote the next time.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Everybody good on that for now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank y'all. First reading of amended ordinance relating to garbage charge on utility bill for services turned on at new construction home during construction.
I had anticipated to draft this, but Denny had sent out some information on garbage rates, and I didn't, I didn't know if we should just combine everything when we. Cause we would do a lot of amending at that point, so if Denny wanted to talk about what he sent out on the garbage rates at this point.
Okay.
You want me to go ahead?
Sure.
You know how I like to talk, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I sent everybody out a proposal, or, for consideration, and basically to lower our garbage rate. Couple of years ago, I just did some research on, on our garbage rates, it may have changed since then. But at the time, we had one of the highest garbage rates in the state of Kentucky. So what's happened is, and you guys probably know, especially y'all have been on council for a while. Our ordinance requires a four percent pay, or four percent rate increase per year. Which goes to the, I guess Wes can help me on this one, it goes to the, on the contract for the transfer of the garbage to the facility.
Correct.
And we also have a half percent increase each year that goes to the city. So our garbage rates since two thousand thirteen, after initial, I think, ten percent for the first year, ten percent for the second year, and after that, it's been going up four and a half percent per year. With the increases, I think it puts us one of the highest. With the increases, I think it puts us one of the highest garbage rates in the state. So I'm proposing maybe to amend the garbage rates, to have a slight lowering and lower it about for residential, and my notes, I think it's 27.50, that you guys should have got. And also for commercial, now, commercial is a little bit different. Commercial has a current, I think the, there's 100 and, what was it, Wes, 190 or so?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah. And of that, there was a few that get a reduced rates, and those are churches and some small businesses that have applied for. And their rate's about 34 and 34.72. I would request considering lower the business rate based on amount that they have. If they have one can, initially, I'd consider maybe doing it, I think, 40 bucks, something like that. But second can, another $5. Let's see. And I think I provided the this year's rates, next year's rates, does that go up in July, Wes?
I'm sorry?
The rates go up in July?
Yes, I believe so, fiscal year, I believe, whenever they go up.
There'll be 30 for residential and 50 26, 30, 51 for residential, 50, 26 for commercial. And if we drop it to 40, that would be a significant increase. Second can would be 45, if it had more than the second can, it would go to 50. And to keep those rates current for this year and not increase up until July 2024. And as a side note, I know Clarkson's current rate's about 20 bucks per month, and then they sell their garbage to us. So it costs them more to get rid of their garbage than it does for us to.
That's something I think we need to check into to figure out exactly what their plan is to get rid of it. And the same way with the other out-of-town routes that these other garbage people are making, bringing it to us. I think we need to find out exactly how much we're charging them for what they're bringing in.
Wes can tell you, I think it's like 60 something, Wes, per ton?
Yeah, I don't think they get a discounted rate. It's like $60 or $62 a ton. It's the same as for any county resident.
It's what Clarkson's giving us and so on.
Yeah.
And for any of the out-of-town routes, anything out of, out of city limits.
I, I think when we imposed this, Harold, you may have been on, I know Teddy probably was.
Yeah.
When we did this, and this was, we'd gotten a little behind, or we were, we were not where we needed to be with garbage. Plus, I think this more encompassed leaf pickup, tree pickup, multiple cans. I mean, I think it, at that time, we were thinking, we provide more services than we charge for. We, we did, you know, recycle, didn't charge nobody. We did tree and leaf pickup after every storm, didn't charge nobody. And I, I think it was more than just one garbage can. I know Wesley picks up eight garbage cans at some places, four garbage cans. Now back to you, Denny, are you limited, is this one can?
Well, here's the deal, under the new cans, that was gonna be, under the new can system, I think is gonna limit to one can. And then if there's more than, or Wes can speak to that, but.
Yeah, you'll be have, if you only, we'll furnish one can per resident. And if they have a can that is up to the same specs that we use in our trucks, that those will be allowed also. So you might have three cans, but they will be what works with our trucks. If you only have one can that we deliver, and you want another one just like the ones that we're bringing, there'll be another charge for that per month.
So if you come to my house and I got one can out, and the next week you come and I got two cans out, who's gonna nail me for another can?
As long as the cans will work with our truck and they've been approved by us.
Yes.
If they can be used, then there won't be any difference.
So you can be, have two or three cans?
You can have two or three cans as a resident.
As a resident.
If you can, if it's the correct can that we can use. And there, a lot of people have one out and bought their own cans.
So, so it ain't per can?
So we're only, I think he's what he's talking about.
Unless they rent, rent a can from the cities, only.
Right, commercial business also.
So all these people that's bought garbage cans already that'll work with your machine?
No, they can use them.
They use them.
Right.
But if you only have the, if you don't have one that'll work with our machine, and we furnish one, and you want another one, then there'll be another charge for that other, of the city cans. Or, I mean, you could go to Walmart and buy a $100.
So if you have a can there that's a little under spec, you just gonna leave it?
Yes, because it has to work with our trucks. It defeats the whole purpose.
And you got anybody trying to bag the truck?
I got one right now, out of four people.
And I think the problem, as you all know, you'll see that, seen them out, you'll have one trailer with two people living in it, and they'll have some red cans or tons of bags. And I think we've gotten to the point that we're kind of the receptacle for a lot of the county. People bringing their trash from outside the city.
Oh, and I, I agree, but I think that's a dumpster deal.
A lot of.
A lot of it's dumpster.
But we have several residences the same, it's just.
And then you have 10 dumpster divers.
Yes.
That's the problem, is they don't pick up what they take out to looking for the golden can or whatever.
We do have an ordinance on that, so if you catch one.
Exactly, but I'm not going, David can do it, but, yeah, if somebody's getting aluminum cans to make a dollar, I ain't going frigging knock them for taking aluminum cans out of dumpster, so.
And Wesley, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there is something in our ordinance that states how much trash, trash a person, a resident can have, but we've never really policed it.
There used to be 36, it used to be a 36 gallon can.
I think it go.
I think it went by weight.
And we may have changed it with this, but it was 36 gallon can.
But there is something in there that calls out how much trash you can have, but like I said, we've never policed it.
Yeah. We don't have nobody to police it.
Right, I mean, how do you?
Exactly.
It goes by yards now, the ordinance is yard, one yard, two yard.
The new can's like two, like 90 pound, isn't it?
95 gallon is what it is.
95 gallon.
Yeah.
What does that translate to a yard, Wes? I thought you were a math major.
Like that, 95 gallons, I don't know how many yards that would be.
But my intent is just to get it more in line with the other municipals, a little bit closer, and even, even with my proposals, and we can adjust it, it'll still be higher than most.
And the other place you had, do they do?
Yes.
Free pickup for trees and leaves and recycling and?
Let me qualify, trees and leaves and limbs, yes. Most other places, if you'll set out something that does not go in the truck, they'll charge you. Like if you set out a couch and it can't go into the garbage truck, they'll come and pick it up, five bucks, 10 bucks, is what a lot of the cities will do for, for the bigger items. And.
And don't get me wrong, I appreciate all the work you've done, but I would just assume personally, implement a new program with recycling pickup that'd add, take away, or save somebody $2. I, I, I think that's the way we need to go. Now, whether it's economically feasible, may not be, and Wes is gonna try to get numbers, but I, but I think here, here in your plan, he's already losing 60 of his budget that he's gonna have to come up with somewhere else.
It, yeah.
To try.
Up to depend on how we're gonna.
Depends on how we're gonna implement, right.
And again, the 60 is based on the optimum amount. It doesn't, based on the second can, it doesn't, you know, if we change the commercial, and I actually think we probably need to raise the commercial more than the 40. For, if we're lowering the residents by 10%, which is about what it would be, I think we need to be consistent and lower the commercial 10% too. So that cuts it back to about, we're talking about 50,000, 40, 45,000, not counting like the second can, or if we have a pickup of a.
Did we do something for churches when you was here, or did we not?
We did.
We did.
We lowered the church rate, and I think there was about 11 people.
Was it just church?
Churches and small businesses that came and made an application, they had to make an application, and some of them, some of them did.
So what's that rate?
34 something, I think, Billy, 34.72.
Is that limited to one can? Or any can that his truck will pick up?
There wasn't any specification in the ordinance about it.
There wasn't any specifications on it.
But that was brought about by our church, we don't have any garbage. We don't have any cans.
I'm sure a lot of them are that way.
The small, I mean, we only have like 25 members. And everybody's welcome on Sunday, Clinton Street.
Years ago, you know, with the building over by the restaurant, so.
Yes.
That's, they didn't have.
Well, you have two, three people that have buildings that when they sign up for service, they had to give garbage that they never generated no garbage.
Yeah.
And they had to pay garbage anyway, but we hit them at a commercial rate.
Yeah.
Because they didn't even do business out of it, it was for their personal use.
Yeah.
So that's, with your church deal, that's where it got into.
Exactly.
Small business.
The thing, go ahead, I'm sorry, Dan.
I apologize, no.
Go ahead.
My thinking is, if we're gonna change, we're gonna probably do something with a can, now would be the time to look at the whole picture.
Agreed.
And that, and we want to include the plastic and the cardboard and, and that too, that, I think when you look at it. And we really need to look at it fairly quick so that Wes has time to do his budget, to get an idea of what he's looking at, if we're gonna make changes. But again, this comes from an idea, I think, I think it's time maybe to lower, it's.
I wouldn't care to look over your numbers for a couple of weeks, but do you want something tonight, or do you?
No, I'm okay with this.
Next week?
Table on it, we'll.
We can hash it and?
Yeah.
Maybe we get, when Sabrina gets off vacation, she can run something for us, get kind of an exact number if we do this, it's gonna cost this.
I, I'm good for that, so if you want.
My biggest, I guess my biggest issue with, with it all is looking at that down here where it ends up 10 years, you know?
Yes.
That's, that's, that surprised me, I hadn't, you know, I hadn't thought about that far ahead, but that far ahead will be here before we know it.
I don't think any of us did when we implemented it, I mean, I mean, we were in a shape that we had to do it, but then.
And the other catch of it is, Billy, we're kind of gonna be locked in that 4% increase, because under the contract with the landfill, it goes up 4% what they charge on the tonnage.
That's why we implemented.
That's why it was implemented.
Because we were trying to stay in the game, instead of trying to catch up the whole time.
Yeah.
The only wiggle room we have is that half a percent.
But instead of lowering rates, we need to freeze the rate, if, if things are going up 4% every year.
Well, that was my thought, lower it a little bit now, and then freeze it for next, to 2014, and then implement the 4% increase after that. Because even that, until you, it still put us top of the heap.
I wouldn't have no trouble freezing it until our terms up. But again, I mean, that's the way it works. And it would be Wesley having to find places to rob to help him out in other places, in that place.
Well, if you freeze it one year, and not the next ever other year.
Well, you can't really do that, you'd have to amend the ordinance. The ordinance mandates a 4% in, 4.5% increase each year now, so you couldn't really do that.
Yeah, but you could amend it.
You'd have to amend it every year.
Yeah, you, you could amend it.
You'd have to do that. But the way it sits now, you couldn't just arbitrarily say, we're not gonna do it this year.
Why don't we, why don't we do this, why don't we, when Sabrina gets back, she'll be back next week, Lori, is that right?
No, she won't be back till the 21st.
21st, okay. When she gets back, maybe we can sit down with her and get her to run some exact numbers and see.
Wesley, can you get some numbers, Wesley?
Peace of mind, too.
Yeah.
Wesley'll get, Wesley'll get over it.
I'll start working on it, so, by the way, whenever she gets back, I just have to have her check it with me.
Okay.
It won't take near as long for her to start.
One other issue too on that, I'd be pretty close on the numbers, because we know how many customers, but one thing to consider too is, I think there's 550 something customers that are 65, that get the reduced rate for being 65. And they would not be impacted by it. Their rate would keep, remain the same, because they're already, you know what that rate is, Wes?
It's pretty significant. I can't remember, I saw it today, but I can't remember what, exactly what it was.
It would still be lower than the proposed rate. I thought I had that.
We can get those numbers together, look at it a little closer, and that'd give you guys a couple of weeks to think about it, and, and see what, see what you think. Like I said, the biggest concern I have is that 10 year, you know, as going down the road. That's significant.
We'll go a little more once we start getting the cans out, because we may have more people that want that second can, or, you know, that may change it a little bit too, that we have, you know, five other people that want an extra can. That's gonna make up a little bit of difference regardless if the rate's down or not. So it, it'll change once we start getting the cans out too.
Wes, what's your feeling on the, on the bigger items to charge to pick them up? I mean, some people, like if you bring it yourself to the transfer station, there's no charge.
No charge.
You, you can bring it, but if, if you want the city to come out and pick up your refrigerator?
I mean, I have to send a person, a couple of people out, I have a vehicle sent out, so I mean, there, there's a little expense on my side, but I mean, it's up to you all as far as what that's said, if we want the charge for that.
Send it out, or somebody will pick it up.
Or include that in, normal services.
How often does that happen, Wes? I mean, I, I know it happens often, but is it enough to make any significant difference in your budget if, if we did that?
Maybe 20 pickups a week of something large that they won't put in the truck.
Yeah.
You know, furniture or mattresses, I don't like for them to handle the mattresses regardless, because you never know.
Yeah.
And so we use a truck to pick that up. So probably at least 20 times a week.
Okay.
We have a truck go out now and pick up some things if we can't get them in the truck.
Okay. And even at that, you're not talking about any significant money?
You're not talking about bucks, you know, even if you dug $5 or $100.
$100 a week?
$20 a year.
Yeah. And that's not, that's not, really, to me, it's not significant enough to, to worry with, charging somebody, you know, I. But it's worth, it's worth considering, for sure. So we'll, we'll table that for now, Wes is gonna get us some numbers and kind of confirm them, and spring, we'll, we'll go from there, if everybody's agreeable to that.
Yes.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Earlene?
Yes. This is a resolution, oh, hold on, resolution to send to the utility commission relating to broadcasting a meeting, last meeting, the council had voted for me to draft that resolution, so that is included. I don't have to read that, we just have to take a vote on it to allow you to be able to sign that.
Okay, is it on the Little League, you're saying, that Little League contract?
Yeah, no, this one is on broadcasting, encouraging the utility to continue to broadcast.
Okay, I skipped something, okay. How do you guys feel about that? We talked about it in the utilities meeting.
How'd they feel about it?
Uh, they weren't very receptive to it, but they said they'd think about it, so.
Why wasn't they receptive?
I can't answer that question, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I didn't know if they, yeah.
They didn't?
No.
I don't see why they wouldn't, I mean.
Well, I know one of the concerns Bob brought up was like, you know, we've had people come in there and talk about their utility bills, and those are things that doesn't really need to be broadcast to everybody, those are private matters. So I know that was one thing, and, and I did tell him that that was something that warranted an executive session, they could go on executive session and it wouldn't be broadcast.
Yes, other cities do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're kind of in a minority on that, actually, I think most cities.
Yeah.
That was about the only thing they really said, wasn't it?
Yeah, they didn't, they just, and then they said they'd think about it, talk more about it. That was meeting before last, not the last meeting, so. I, I don't know that they'd be, you know, opposed to it per se, but I don't know that they'd be crazy about it either, so. If we, you know, when I talked to them about it, I told them that, you know, the council had talked, and, you know, we thought it was.
I mean, we appointed positions.
Yeah, yeah, and everybody else is gonna be doing it, so. So I think, personally, I think if we ask them to do it, they'll do it, don't you, Lori?
I think they will.
That's what this resolution is, is asking them to do it.
Yes.
Yes.
Officially.
Well, let's ask them, see what you say.
Okay.
Hess off to Earlene, that was well written.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, do we need to vote on that, Earlene?
Yes, you can vote on that.
I'll make a motion.
Clayton makes a motion, send Gina second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Res- resolution authorizing Mayor Miller to sign Little League contract. It's hard for me to say that.
And I have passed that constitution out. It needs a, someone from the city to sign that, and the mayor is who always is, signs contracts, and so I just need something in writing allowing you to sign that.
So, unless anybody has any questions, I'll take a motion to, that'll allow me to do that. Clayton?
I'll second it for you.
Tooty second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the December 2022 financial statement. Has everyone had a chance to look over those?